We will get the council meeting called to order. Everybody stand for the pledge, please. Quick, take the roll.
Mayor O'Connor.
Here.
Morissette.
Here.
Alms.
Here.
DeZiel.
Here.
Brooke.
Here.
Paul.
Here.
Excellent. All right. It's time for comments and suggestions from citizens present. Once again, this is your opportunity to talk about issues that are not on the agenda. And if you have anything to say, any comment that you'd like to make, please come up to the podium, state your name and where you live. And try to keep your comments brief and try not to repeat comments that other people have made. Having said all that, is there anyone that has a comment they'd like to make? Mary Claire. Welcome. Thank you. Did you? What?
Oh, good evening, Mayor and common council members. My name is Mary Claire Olson-Potter, President of the Hudson Chamber of Commerce located at 502 Second Street. So as we all know, it's been a challenging couple of years, and it seems like it's been a couple of years since I've been face-to-face in front of you, so it's great to be here tonight. And we know many businesses will spend a number of years working out of this pandemic. And you know, there are hiring challenges, supply chain issues, and inflation concerns. But as we move forward into spring and summer, and Hudson is full of fun for everyone who visits and who lives in this community. And we're working on several events, starting with the Hudson Community Expo that'll be held on May 1st up at the Hudson High School. And plans are already underway for summer events, Booster Days, Yellowstone Trail, Brit Fest, and River Fest, just to name a few. So, and we're already working on the Spirit of St. Croix event, which will be held in September. And we are excited about the 23 new lamp posts that are up, so we've ordered some additional banners for both the summer and the holidays to fill those. And we've planned out a lot of our advertising placements to continue to attract visitors to Hudson and talking with properties. We're hearing that numbers are going up, and even traffic during the week with business travel is starting to come back at the hotel properties. So we are encouraged by those, by those numbers. And as we all know, from the last two years, we know things can change quickly, and we pivot and we adapt as needed. But what does not change is the commitment of the Hudson Chamber to be there to support businesses, employees, and the Hudson community. I want to thank you for your support of Buena Vista, a stroll in the park. Thousands of residents and visitors came to see the lights in Lakefront Park this past winter and then enjoyed the shops and many of the restaurants that this community has to offer. We are already making plans for this year. We're already raising money for that and talking about ideas, and we'd like to add like lights and garlands to 23 of those new lamp posts. So we have plans already underway for that. So, but I invite you just to take a few minutes to enjoy the video that Nate and his team from River Channel put together showcasing the lights in Lakefront Park. And again, on behalf of the Hudson Chamber, thank you for your participation, and I look forward to our continued work together. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mary Claire. We got a nice picture, framed picture here for Mary Claire in the chamber of the lights in the park.
I think we have a video.
And a nice little recognition. Oh, I'm sorry, you're putting that up now?
No, that's okay.
Okay. Nice little recognition also.
Nice.
So here you go. I think there is sound, Brian. Sound?
They're working on it.
Oh, sorry. If you don't know, there were 250,000 lights in the park this past winter, and over 3,000 just on that 18-foot Christmas tree in the van shell alone. If you remember, the snowflakes were created because we lost seven large trees in the park this fall due to that storm, and so we had to reimagine and recreate what we could do in the park. I'm sure you appreciate my commentary along with this, don't you? That's what I thought. The amazing part of this investment, it stays up for almost three months. That's a long time. It makes a good investment. And we are so fortunate to have so many businesses and private families that support this, this effort.
Right.
All right, way to go, River Channel. Thank you so much.
Thank you, Mary Claire. Appreciate it. Very nice job. Any other comments? Any of the comments? Any of the comments? Hearing none, we'll move on to the next portion of the agenda, Consent Agenda.
Approve the meeting minutes from the March 7th, 2022 regular council meeting. Approve the council claims of the amount of $616,055.73. Approve the Class B liquor license for the FIP Center for the Arts. Approve hiring a senior engineering technician. Approve resolution approving the submittal of the Wisconsin Idol Site's redevelopment grant application for the property at 1500 Crestview Drive. Approve development agreement between the City of Hudson and Crestview Holdings LLC. Approve ARPA Public Safety Fund.
Can you pull that for me?
And approve the hiring of an accountant.
Move to approve. Second?
Got a motion, second to approve Consent Agenda with the exception of item G. Is that right, Paul?
Yep. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Roll call.
Morissette?
Yes.
Alms?
Yes.
DeZiel?
Yes.
Brooke?
Yes.
Paul?
Yes.
All right. Consent Agenda is approved with the exception of item G. Item G, Paul?
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Mayor. So I just had some questions. I'm not sure who to address them to. There was a real lack of detail in the packet when it came to the idea of the lighting for downtown, and I love the idea, but I haven't seen any plans or any details, so I was trying to figure out more about that. Does anyone have a sense of what we're talking about with that?
Chief, I don't know if you wanted, or Dean, I can tell you, when I first proposed this and talked with, with the chief and others, it had to do with what we thought was insufficient lighting in parking lots, city-owned parking lots downtown, and in some of the darkened areas that people needed to pass through just to try to make them safer. But Chief, pardon me?
Alleyways.
Alleyways, yeah. Correct, Mr. Mayor. Alley, you see, oh, well. And yeah, alleyways, alleyways to have some additional lighting, as well as some of the parking lots and some of the other areas in the downtown district that are not necessarily well-lit. That's what the lighting component essentially was.
Yeah, so what's, what'll happen is, is we're working right now with Excel to identify the locations and to, you know, where we can do it. You know, we have to, there's more involved than just throwing up more lights because we know it's in the riverway and things like that, so we have to be careful with that. So we're, we're working through that process now of identifying all the locations, all those sort of things. And so this, like the other items, as was talked about at Finance tonight, this will come back to the council later for final approval and things. We have basically some placeholders now. We wanted to make sure the council supported it before we started getting into it too far. And so, you know, if the council supports these items, I mean, some are easy, you know, that we, that are a little easier that we can just bring back pretty quickly to get final approval to move ahead with. But this one, it will take some more time. We're working through the process right now. And so before we actually do any purchases of anything off this list, they will come back to the council for final approval. And so when the lighting comes back, we'll have a full lighting plan that'll show all the locations of the new lights, you know, things like that. So that will come back before we get final approval, expend anything, with a final cost, too.
Yeah, and I think they're both good ideas. I mean, I support the idea of the lighting and the cameras or whatnot. The other thing that wasn't clear in the package for me was the number 250,000, like, where does that come from? How much is cameras? How much is lighting?
I'm gonna say most of that, honestly, is probably gonna be cameras. It's gonna be a bigger chunk, but the cameras are fairly, I mean, they're not super expensive, but they're, they're fairly expensive. I mean, if you start talking, I don't know, Jeff, where were we at with some of the LPR? I mean, somewhere between 15, about 15,000 a camera to have them tied in.
Yeah, we got it down to about 10,352 per camera site. That doesn't include LPR, and that's only if our Public Works Department installs the cameras.
Yeah. And we thought we would end up probably having, you know, five, six cameras go in, somewhere in there, maybe more. Again, it was kind of, we were kind of ballparking a little bit, and then we were gonna take some time to do a little more, you know, homework on where exactly we really needed the cameras and where would it be really nice to have the cameras, you know, see what we can fit in that way. And then the, the lighting portion of the budget was kind of the same thing. We had, you know, we're kind of estimating, are we gonna spend, you know, 100,000 on lighting, you know, maybe something like that. That may be high. We're hoping it's highs, but we wanted to be able to identify, you know, all the spots that we could potentially put the lighting, you know. So again, it's the ballpark of what we thought we'd spend between both the lighting and the cameras. And our thought was, we'd aim high, we'd get all, then if the council's supportive, we'll get all the details, we'll come back with the final numbers. But we're trying to do this whole not, not to exceed sort of thing. And then anything left over, bonus, we can, you know, the council can decide where they want to use that extra funding then.
I guess my last question on it would be, could the lighting, being it's an infrastructure item, could the lighting come out of the ARPA funds? Could it come out, or I'm sorry, could the lighting come out of the TID District funds from Downtown District 6? And my thinking on it is that if we were able to support or pay for the lighting from the Downtown TID District, that just stretches that federal money further. And I think I would rather see it come from the TID District since it's a downtown issue, and then again, have the flexibility of putting that American Rescue Plan money in other areas if we chose to do that.
I don't know if Mike wants to come up and talk about that at all, but otherwise, I think the answer is yes. We could use the, the TIF money towards the lighting portion of it. That, that would qualify, I believe, as an eligible expense for that. So we could look at, once we get that number, we know exactly what it is, we could have that then conversation about use of ARPA versus use of the, the TIF money to make that call. Yes, I think that, that would, would be eligible.
Yeah. We included that in the TID 6 project plan, so that is an eligible expense for the TIF District. We will have, I think it's important to note, too, that we'll have our lighting engineer, Ken Taylor on with SEH, come in and review kind of our detailed plan to help us arrive at that number like Aaron was talking about. But we wanted to make sure we had, you know, a not-to-exceed number that was, was, was good enough to get done, what we wanted to get done as well, so.
So again, I'm supportive of both things. I'm just trying to figure out the best, wisest way to pay for those lights. Does that make sense to other people on the council? I guess I'd love to hear.
So do you have a motion, Paul?
No, I'm just trying to see right now. I'm not in the room, so it's a little hard for me to read the room. I'm trying to figure out if people would share that concern, or not that concern, share that idea of...
I think what I'm seeing here is that people share your, your response to this. So, you know.
Could we just to make a motion to pass the, the expenses listed minus the, the lighting?
I don't want to see that. I don't want to slow the project down. Like, like you said, if we get the, the monies from somewhere else, we can always subtract from this total.
Do we need like an amendment saying that we are open to exploring where this, the funds are going to come from? We know we're gonna move forward, but we'll determinate, determine the funds at a later, the fund source at a later date?
I'm hearing from Mike that it's already included in the, in the expenses.
We can use TID money for it.
Okay.
We can.
Yeah, I, I would say that would be fine if you wanted to, you know, make that motion, basically what, what Paul said, but then say that we'll still continue forward the lighting portion with that revenue source to be determined once we get the, the final numbers.
Yeah, I want to see the lighting. I just want us to be smart about where we draw the funds from, so.
To Randy's point, I'm wondering, what is the timing of the TID money if we were to use that money? In other words, using ARPA funds now versus months from now?
The TID money you'll have to include in your bonding, right? So basically, it'll be an inter-fund loan, you know, from when their next bond is, and then we'll have to pay the TID District back over time. Or the TID will have to pay us back, the city, over time.
Regardless of what source we use, it shouldn't slow off the actual implementation of the lighting.
Right.
Okay. Everybody, is there, is that your motion, Paul?
I'm, I'm gonna withdraw the motion because I think it's confusing now. Randy, did you have a better sense? I guess what I want to see is, I want to see these projects happen, but I want the flexibility of saying, maybe we can pay for the lighting in a different way.
I think that's what Aaron is saying and Mike, and the fact that we did it with the CAD system is no different than this in my mind. And I just want to see, I mean, we've heard so much from our community and our business owners downtown about lights and cameras. My fear was slowing the project down. I appreciate your support, Paul, but like Aaron said, it doesn't really matter where we designate it right now, the money's there, or we'll backfill it.
So here's my suggestion, just to simplify this. I think everybody's on the same page on this. I don't think that we need any action tonight. I think we take a look at it as we go down the road, if we want to fund it from TID money later, we do that. In the meantime, I think, I think the sentiment is that we do want to move forward with this project as quickly as we can, pay for it, and then have the TIF District pay the city back if that's what we decide later. So I would say we don't need any action tonight.
Well, we do need to approve moving it forward.
Yeah, that part, yeah, yeah.
And Paul, you pulled it. Are you comfortable making that motion?
Yeah, again, it's hard from where I'm sitting. What I'm hearing you say is, we want to approve the, everything on the issue sheet moving forward with the idea that we may want to look at another funding source for the lighting in particular.
Right.
I'll second that motion.
Was there a motion?
I'm sorry. I think Paul made that motion, yeah. Okay, so we have a motion, a second. Is there any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion's approved.
Let's just get it done.
Yep. Yep. Discussion possible action on EMS fund closeout.
So last meeting, we had a closed session. We discussed the legalities of, of the situation, so the council's fully aware of that. So now, when we actually discuss the decision-making process of it, that's why we're back in open session for it. So we, we had a lot of conversation, you know, last time, so now at this point, we just need to decide how we want to handle the actual closeout.
I have a question before we do this. So how is this going to be handled with each of the municipalities if, I mean, we're gonna be putting out this proposed use of, or distribution of the funds? What happens if one of the municipalities comes back and says, "I don't like your plan"?
You know, we'd have to do, address it at that point in time. Like I said, I mean, this is, it's strictly, as you said, based on the audited numbers of what's available, the exact percentages of what each of the partners paid in, that sort of thing. So all we can do is, you know, in our proposal to them, present what it is, and here's the check. If they would like to dispute that, they can come back, and then we'd have to consider what their concern is. You know, I don't know what their concerns could be, so it's, it's hard to say how we'd address them, but we would basically have to come back to council to, to review the concerns and see if there's validity that we would need to, you know, take a look at, maybe make something different.
So we would issue the checks right away, then?
Yeah, I think we'd, I think we'd send them, I think we'd, I think we'd contact them with a letter saying, here's the amount, your check is forthcoming, that sort of thing, and then that way, if somebody had it, they would give them a chance at least to come back and, and try to, you know, raise a concern before we actually, you know, send everything out.
Anybody else?
Yeah, so I participated in a joint fire board meeting that I'm a part of just this last Thursday. And we talked a little bit about, you know, I don't know if everybody knows here, but we are losing our fire chief, right? He's retiring in the next couple of months. Anyway, so we were talking about sort of the capital costs over the course of the next three to five and beyond years. Talked about capital costs, talked about a fire truck that we'll need to purchase in the not-too-distant future. So I talked with those partners after that meeting a little bit and just kind of talked to them about, proposed an idea of what if we took what was left over remaining in the EMS funds that would be coming to them normally and continue on strengthening our partnership by putting those funds towards, specifically towards, capital costs with our joint fire board. And so the two chairs were there from the Town of Hudson, from the Village of North Hudson, and they seemed amenable to that. And then I was able to connect with Ray Knapp down at Town of Troy today, and he, too, seemed amenable to that. So, so I guess at this point, obviously with transparency, we need to send some sort of formal agreement to our partners, have them kind of give their blessings, so to speak, but then we would just retain those funds for capital costs coming down the road instead of having to borrow for those. So that said, I'd like to move that we direct staff to reach out to the boards of our partner municipalities and to draft an agreement to use their portion of the remaining EMS funds for future capital expense on the joint fire board.
I'll second that. Yep.
Okay, we got a motion, a second. Any discussion?
Is that after we take out the, the money for the CAD system?
Yeah, Aaron, I don't know if you can delineate.
Yeah, what I would say then would be that, yes, we, we do the CAD system off the top, and then we also do, as we discussed, our city administrative expenses that are gonna remain as we move forward. And then that remaining balance would be what we'd be talking about putting into the Fire Capital Fund for purchase of trucks and, you know, things, equipment, things like that. And then, you know, we would, we would, like Bill said, reach out to each of the partners, let them know that this is the plan, here's all this, you know, these funds would then be used, which is a benefit, you know. I, I think that actually the concept is a wonderful concept, it's a benefit to everyone, it's, it keeps it within public safety. And so we, we let them know that, and then like, kind of like what you concerned raised before, Joyce, they'd have the chance to say, we don't agree. That, you know, for some reason, we don't like this, whatever, that's fine, then we can come back and talk about this again. But yeah, basically, we, we take the CAD off the top, we take our admin expenses for the ongoing closeout of the, of the remaining EMS outstanding accounts, and then the rest would be put into that Fire Capital Fund.
I'd like to ask them that, instead of using ARPA funds for the turnout gear for the firefighters, that we take it out of this, this fund.
What was the total on that?
Twenty-four.
On the turnout gear is 125.
125, yeah.
Why, Joyce, it's, we've got it going, it's, I guess, what's the thought?
Well, it's something that's going to benefit all of the municipalities. Why should Hudson pay for it out of the ARPA funds when we could have it paid for out of funds that belong to all of the municipalities? And use that ARPA, that ARPA money for something else.
Well, this is all going into the same fund right now, so everybody's gonna get a piece of that. I don't know if it makes much difference. Well, I, I thank you, Bill. I think that this is a fair and equitable way, after our closed session hearing, that this was probably one of the best routes we could have gone.
No, I agree with that.
I, I agree with that, too. I, I think one of the things that we came out of that meeting was how important it was to maintain and improve the relationships with our townships. So I, I commend you, Councilmember Alms, for coming up with a creative solution. It takes care of the concerns I had about setting a precedent and putting us in a potentially slippery slope. So I, I am really excited about this alternative and appreciate you. So thank you.
I'll take that thanks and turn that right around to our departing chief, Scott St. Martin.
We didn't accept his resignation yet.
That's true. We could vote on that.
Yeah, Bill, I want to echo that, too. I think it's a great idea. I think it strengthens the partnerships. I think it's public safety-oriented. I think it's a great use of, you know, whatever's left over from EMS to continue down that track of, of keeping people safe through fire. So I commend you for reaching out and doing that groundwork for us. Thank you.
Yeah.
All right, anybody else? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion's approved. Transit update.
Thank you. I did request an update. I know we have a transportation study that we approved in January, and I was wondering if we could, I'm having residents and community members ask me for an update and a status on that, so I'm hoping that, I'm not certain if that would be from Aaron or if that'd be from Mr. Mayor.
Um, I can, oh, what's up? Go ahead.
Go ahead, Aaron, that's fine.
Okay, sorry, I didn't mean to cut you off. Yeah, I can, I can provide a quick update. So actually, we approved that in November. I was wrong about that, that date. Time flies. So back in November, we did approve the West Central Wisconsin Regional Planning Commission, I'm missing probably one letter in there somehow, to do an update of our transportation study, which is a requirement for us to apply for federal, state and federal funds. It's, it's actually all federal funds, but they, they get administered through the state. So, so we did that in November. The study's underway. We're on track to be finished with the study by June, and so we're, we're on track with that. When Councilmember Brooke had asked for the update, we did reach out to the Planning Commission, the West Central Wisconsin Regional, to get an update from their staff that were working on it, just to see if there's anything new. So we did get an update late, late last, late last week. So basically, the update was, is, one, they're on track with the study, but two, they said that things are sort of evolving and changing a little bit with everything on the state side. One of the things is the, the 2020 census is done, but there's something called federal urbanized areas that have not been released yet, and it's going to depend on if we're considered to be part of the Minneapolis-St. Paul federal urbanized area, or if we're not part of that. If we're part of the Minneapolis-St. Paul federal urbanized area, our funding source is one program. If we're not part of it, our funding source is another program. So that will have a little bit of an impact on where we apply and, you know, and things like that. So we're supposedly supposed to get that information from the census in late spring. So as long as that comes in, we'll know we can actually apply for funding, so that's, that'll be good. Then the next part is, is that the planner working on this said that he has, understand that Wisconsin may be changing the process of how we apply for the funds through them to get the federal funds. So we're trying to get that verified with the state. We've reached out to a couple of different contacts that we have, that we know that both River Falls and Richmond, that's who kind of they have contacts with, with their programs. We're trying to get verification on that or not. So, you know, there's a few things that are, you know, kind of, you know, possibly in flux that we need to get verified, and that could have some effect on timing and things like that, that we're just not 100% sure of. And then the last thing was something that we probably should all expect, but that we did take into account, is that the process to actually get the, to actually get the vehicles through the federal program is delayed because everything's delayed. Right now, with any sort of, as, you know, as Mike had said, you know, with some of the Public Works vehicles, these things kind of are getting a little delayed. But we took that into account when we initially looked at this program because we actually um, we actually had some ideas about partnering with some of our neighboring communities that already have vehicles, um, even some of our healthcare providers that have them, to use at the interim start before we can acquire our, our own. But, you know, so that was part of the update. Um, and then, um, but with that, with the new federal transportation funding, uh, and infrastructure funding that's out there, there's also a number of new programs now with a, actually a fairly significant amount of transportation dollars available this year. And so, we're now also looking at so, funding sources that we never even really knew were going to be available, um, that are, as Dean will, you know, talk about with the infrastructure things, that are all of a sudden coming out, that we have short timeframes we gotta get applied for and things like that. So, so now we have new funding sources, which is wonderful. Um, so, we're, we're working on identifying those funding sources and applying. We're actually using, um, there's another provider that we were put in contact with, um, through our local hospital, um, who also has a facility on the Minnesota side, and they were working with Washington County on the Minnesota side for, um, a countywide program over there, and we're actually looking at trying to partner with them on that program. Um, and this is through a different provider that would be using these new federal transportation dollars and things. Um, we're also looking at just tapping those federal transportation dollars for our own program as well. So, so there's a whole lot going on with all this, um, but, you know, the mayor has stressed that this is a priority for the city. Um, you know, but back when this started, um, you know, the mayor's direction to staff was, is, you know, "We need to get this going, we need to get this, you know, we need to meet the deadlines, we need to get this up and running as soon as we can." Um, and we still feel that even though there's some uncertainty out there with, with some things with the state, um, and, and potentially changing some things, but with all these new programs, with what we understand the state program is, and hopefully is not changing too dramatically, um, we still feel that we're on track. Um, you know, I, we'll do all, everything in our, our power. I, you know, staff, you know, I had, uh, you know, promised the mayor that we know this is a priority. We know that, you know, especially during COVID, when our local, um, hospitals stopped their service clearly, and then since then, they're not going to be restarting them, um, that there's a real big need for this. And so, um, you know, we, we recognize that this is a priority for, um, for the city. Um, we recognize that it's, it's very much a priority for, um, our citizens, especially our elderly disabled. Uh, but, you know, we're looking at a, a, a full transit program still. Um, you know, that's going to be available for all, but of course, we'll have, um, a focus on the elderly and disabled with the type of, uh, uh, vehicles that will be using, things like that. So, with all that, there's a lot going on, but there always was. Um, the good news is, is that, you know, even though there may be some changes that are happening that we would have had a potential negative impact on our timing, there's other ones that look like they could actually maybe even speed things up a little, um, and even have more money available to offer a more robust service than what we were initially anticipating to be able to do. So, that's a lot. There's a lot going on. I don't have a lot of a hundred percent answers yet. Um, but we expect that we should by the time our study's done, and we have to come back to the council to get all the, um, approvals we need, um, to keep moving forward with applying for grants and, and all that sort of thing.
Thank you so much. Um, this is, this is exciting news. We certainly have needed this. And so, if I understand correctly, the starting point is for our aging population and for folks with disabilities with the hope of, um, continuing on to add transportation for all. The funding source, if I understand correctly, the bulk of it looks like there will be, um, grant funds. Um, so there, it sounds like there's no, um, tax implication for our residents, if I'm understanding correctly. And then the last thing I just wanted to clarify, I know the starting date is unclear. Um, some residents are under the, understanding that, um, there's been some commitments for this fall, which would be astounding, and I would love to see happen, but is that a realistic expectation?
So, um, I'll try to answer them in order. Um, actually, the service will, um, unless there's a new funding source that, you know, we're, we haven't been able to fully research yet, the, the service will actually be open for all right away. But the focus will be on the, um, elderly disabled, and by focus, you mean that's where we partner with our hospitals, our nursing homes, and, and things like that. Um, but technically, the service will be available for all, um, uh, right at startup, is, is, is what, what the intent is. Um, what was the middle part? Oh, there, there always will be some sort of local commitment for transit service. Um, there, you know, we, depending on, you know, what funding source it is, we're, like I said, with some of these new ones, we're not a hundred percent sure of what the match requirements necessarily are. Um, but we do know from the existing, our existing neighboring communities, New Richmond, River Falls, what they pay. Um, it's very minimal for, for the services that they provide. I mean, we're talking, you know, twenty thousand dollars, thirty thousand dollars, um, a year, um, to provide the, the transit service, uh, based on what they're doing. You know, again, that's based on historic numbers, not new numbers when we talk about rising costs of everything, gas, equipment, vehicles, but based on what they have historically, um, done and, and looking at their, their history, that's what we had budgeted for this in our anticipation of it coming about this year. And then as far as the timing goes, if nothing changes with the deadlines that we are aware of, you know, basically, the, the timing was that we would be up and running, um, by the end of this year, before the end of this year. And that, like I said, you know, that would be, uh, you know, contingent on making sure everything stays the same, new funding, you know, current funding with WISTOT, things like that, but that is still the intent. And that is what we base this off of, um, you know, when we got the original, um, schedule, um, from what the other communities are seeing and talking, and then also we're talking with the, uh, planning, uh, organization about, um, what that looked like. And now, again, you know, we are doing everything that's in our control to make sure that that happens still, you know, this year. Um, but there's a lot of pieces with this that are outside of our control, and that's no different than it ever was. Um, but when things change, you know, we have to be able to adjust to that. Um, so, right now, we're doing everything we can to stay on that schedule. Uh, now, if things change from the outside, obviously, the council will be the first to know, and we'll have to provide updates and, and, and see what, you know, what those impacts are. Um, but, you know, based on everything that, you know, that we, you know, used to start this process back, um, in November last year when we approved the study, um, that was, um, our goal timeframe, and it still is right now unless something changes.
Thank you so much for the update, and, and I am sure we have a hybrid vehicle in our mindset for that.
We'll, we'll definitely have to see what we can do. You know, it's, again, a lot of that's based, we'll have to look at it, and it's all based on what the federal and state requirements are for the vehicle acquisition and things. Um, because they do pay pretty much almost all the vehicle acquisition costs. Um, so, we, we'll have to follow whatever the program guidelines are, but we will, we will push for that, for sure.
Thank you so much.
All right.
How many vans would be needed for a city this size?
So, that's what the study update will tell us. You know, right, you know, right now, our, I think our estimate to start was three. Uh, but that was just based on, you know, you, you know, based on estimates of the information we had. The updated study will provide us with that information of what we really need, and what that number will be to, you know, to, to optimally start our, our program.
So, Aaron, can I just ask, um, coming in on Zoom again, Paul doesn't hear, sorry. Was it originally, we were thinking, correct me if I'm wrong, originally, were you thinking it was going to be like a private service? And are we thinking more of, it's a public service, or is it like a partnership, or what, what are we thinking right now?
So, i- i- it is a city-operated service, but we contract with a third-party provider to do it. Um, it's really not, I mean, the city can do it themselves, but it's, you know, from our looking into, you know, what River Falls, New Richmond has, have done, it's just really not cost-effective to, to be able to do it ourselves, which is why all the state program, you know, basically allows for this third-party contracting. Um, so my guess would be, unless something unusual happens, we're going to have the same providers, yeah, the other communities in our, in the county as well.
Thank you.
Anybody else? All right. We'll move on. Um, discussion of possible action regarding federal infrastructure bill strategy and adopting revised 2022 to 2026 infrastructure CFP. Dean, welcome.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor and councilmembers. Uh, so, the pleasure of coming in before you once again to talk about infrastructure grant opportunities. I wish that I could be done talking with you about these things, but, uh, it's the world we live in right now. So, uh, this is kind of an update item based on, uh, you know, previously, the city council, uh, approved a project list essentially of grant applications that, uh, we will be submitting, uh, for in regards to the federal infrastructure bill. And, uh, kinda after, after we approved that, uh, we had some conversations with WISTOT. Uh, specifically, this started out, uh, uh, them informing us that we were not successful with obtaining our STP urban grant funding for the Carmichael Road and Vine Street projects that we applied for last October. And, uh, we asked, kinda, okay, uh, can you give us some feedback as to, you know, why that would be? Because it seemed to not make sense with Carmichael Road in particular, that we have, you know, tons of thousands of vehicles that would be impacted by, by the project, and so, uh, spare you the long, monotonous details. But, uh, essentially, due to that information, um, uh, more or less, we are not going to be successful with traditional STP urban, uh, projects into the near future. So, there, uh, so that's, uh, that applies to then, uh, the federal fiscal year 2023 to 2026 projects that we originally had, uh, brought before you. Based on the fact that WISTOT ten, intends to administer those the same way they do their regular STP urban, uh, projects, if we're not going to be successful with the ones we've already put in, then we're probably not going to be successful with these. And so, why bother expending the time and energy to go through the process like this?
What was the feedback? Why, why weren't we successful?
Uh, yeah, let me see if I can, uh, succinctly summarize this. So, um, WISTOT, uh, first of all, does not really explain well how they, how, behind the curtain of their operations, how they select these projects. And so, it had been, uh, intimated to us originally that, you know, STP projects are based on, you know, merit essentially. So, you know, projects that impact more vehicles traveled during the day, or, you know, uh, more pedestrians walking, or something like that, or benefit cost analysis, that kind of stuff, are, you know, scored higher in the STP urban, you know, stuff like that. So, that's the impression that we've been always operating under in putting these grant applications together. So, talking with the WISTOT, uh, local programs person, uh, instead of that, they actually operate the STP process on a, um, essentially a, account that each city and state has. And, once you get that account balance, they add, they add a certain amount of money into that account every year or two with the STP allocation for the state each, each, uh, every other year. And our fund balance is too low to support, uh, being awarded these projects. And I'm still kinda trying to get the information as to why our account balance is so low. Um, which projects in the past we may have applied for that took money out of that pot of money, so to speak. So, I still don't have the answer to that yet, but essentially, our account balance is like a hundred and fifty thousand dollars right now. I don't know why. And I, I'm still trying to get the answer to that question. That being said, if we apply for a project that we're asking for two million dollars on, we can, they allow you to go in the hole, so to speak, but they don't allow you to go that far in the hole, if that makes sense. Um, and so, once, once the financial threshold, like if they've determined that your account balance is okay, or something like that, then it moves to that merit-based selection process. And so, because we didn't, uh, uh, we, we don't have the financial part of it, uh,
That don't make no sense.
I, it, I'm still kinda trying to scratch my head as, as to exactly how we got to the process that we're in.
Was Wisconsin Street used out of that fund?
Uh, I don't, I think that was an L-RIP project, but I don't. So was Vine Street. So, I don't know what project would have expended that money in the past, but, and essentially, we get, so we have about a hundred and fifty thousand dollar balance right now, and they tell us that we get about a hundred thousand dollars a year added to that fund, so to speak. And so, that means that we're not going to have a lot of money in the STP fund, and our balance is not going to be high enough to get selected for these projects. So, this does not apply to the 2022, uh, uh, STP urban because they have to essentially shove that money out the door this year, so they're doing it a separate, separate way. Um, does also not apply to the new STP local program, and doesn't apply to the Transportation Alternatives Program or TAP. It doesn't apply to L-RIP. It's just for the STP urban pot of money, so to speak. And so, uh, the list you see before you is shuffling things around to minimize our reliance on STP urban and more rely on our better chances relatively to get STP local, TAP, and the 2022 federal infrastructure money, because we'd be relatively more successful that way. Uh, so I hope that explains at least my knowledge of how, how the, uh, workings of WISTOT are, are happening right now and where we came to this, uh, this, where we're at today. So, if you have any questions, I, I would not be surprised, but hopefully, I'll be able to answer them for you.
And one thing I would say is, don't ask Dean to explain the workings of WISTOT. None of us, none of us can do that, as we all know, so, you know, don't put him on the spot for that, because we can't do that one.
Yep.
I'm just happy to see Green Street emboldened and bold.
Yeah, we, so we added that project as part of the STP local, uh, because that would apply to the STP local solicitation. Yep. And, uh, the other part of this, so then, is whatever grants we do apply for, we have to have list, or projects we apply for grants for, we have to have listed in an approved CIP document. So, that is before you tonight. That includes all these projects in there, uh, with estimated costs. As I believe Aaron, uh, mentioned, the last time we, uh, approved a five-year CIP, uh, you know, we will revisit this every year, uh, in our normal CIP process. And, um, so if you see something you're concerned about in 2025, know that we will have plenty of chances to talk about that in future years, that kind of thing. Uh, the most important would be, obviously, for anything that's listed on the sheet. Um, but also, most important would be, you know, for this year or next year would be most important to figure out what we're doing for those years. Aaron, did you have anything else to add to that, or does that sound about right?
Nope, that's right. Uh, just like I said, always to remember, this is a planning document, um, but it's a document that we need to have updated to apply for the funding to show that the council's reviewed and knows that these are on our schedule. But regardless of what's in the document, that, every project has to come back for the council for approval before it ever would get, um, uh, actually go, uh, move forward. Um, and then the document itself will be reviewed every year, um, like Dean said, as part of our, um, budget and capital, uh, planning process.
And we're not expecting to receive all these projects, right?
Are we set in stone? Once we send it, if we're approved, can we shuffle them from year to different year? In case we have a catastrophic, uh, Green Street failure?
There is some amount of that. I mean, I think I've listed Green Street for 2023, if I remember right. So, that's probably the earliest we could do that project anyway at this point in time. Uh, but there, there is a little bit of that. You can check boxes on the application if, can this project be advanceable, yes or no, that kind of thing. So, um, there is that opportunity for some of these projects, yep.
Thank you.
Anybody else? All right, Dean.
So, are you looking for a motion?
Yes, I'm looking for a motion to approve that CIP document that's in your packet.
I make the motion that we adopt the suggested changes to the federal infrastructure funding strategy and adopting the five-year infrastructure and capital improvement plan.
Second.
Got a motion, a second. Further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion's approved.
Thanks, everyone, for your patience with this.
Thank you, Dino. All right, I don't have anything. Anybody?
I'm moved to adjourn.
Second? Motion's second to adjourn. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion's approved. We stand adjourned. Thanks, everybody.